Okay, so now I'll call to the order, the city of Apache Junction, City Council Work Session. Roll call.
Mayor Wilson?
Uh, yes, I'm here.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Still here, present.
Councilmember Biggs?
Still here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Gremmell?
Here.
Councilmember Nessar?
Present.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor?
Okay, we want to move the third item up, correct?
To number two.
Oh, to number two?
Yep, yep.
Okay, so we'll do the presentation discussion with Commissioner Jeffrey Mitchell of the Human, excuse me, Health and Human Services Commission. Jennifer?
Thank you, Your Honor. This evening, Mr. Mitchell is here to present their appropriation funding for the nonprofits. But I would like to say that last year Heather Patel was able to make my wishes come true. She actually created an entire system for how the nonprofits are ranked so that there was some basis, if we were ever questioned, how we decided on how to fund the monies to these nonprofits. So this isn't just a look at their application anymore, see what they're doing, and then kind of divvy the money out. There's actually a scoring rubix that they have to use. They have to meet the goals in order for them to be receiving their quarterly payments. So this is the second year that the Health and Human Services Commission has used the application process and the scoring rubics for their appropriation funding. They did meet in March. They were given the applications at the end of February, early March, so they had the month to look at them. They had their first discussion at the end of March. They did have questions of the nonprofits, but because they were so minimal, staff collected the questions. We sent the questions to those nonprofits. And then in April, we met back with Health and Human Services, provided them the answers to their questions, and then they reviewed the rest of the application and decided how to fund them. Mr. Mitchell will then let you, fill you in on the rest of the details. Thank you.
Good evening, Council.
Mayor.
Thanks for having me. I guess I was a little taken aback by what Mr. Struble had to say, so I wanted to start by saying a few things. One thing that makes me very proud to be on the Health and Human Services Council is that Health and Human Services can be an integral part of the community to help reduce crime. I've seen it from Chicago with the CAPS program, how, you know, if you have somebody who doesn't have food in their stomach and they go to our Walmart, what are they going to do? They're going to scan something through the register, right? They're going to steal. They're going to be motivated to do things that aren't appropriate. So by helping do this, by helping give the nonprofits money to accomplish their missions and to serve our community, they're going to be better serving our community to lower crime and help with some of the other goals. So I don't think you should see it as money that's oppositional to each other. And I don't know if Chief Kelly knows that from the, being a part of Chicago for so long, but the CAPS program has been very effective. Also Salvation Army is one of the five that we're going to talk about tonight. I know Mr. Struble serves on the board of the Salvation Army, so I'm a little surprised that he wouldn't want them to receive said funding. But going into it, we had five organizations request this year: AJ CDC, Boys and Girls Club, Genesis Project, Salvation Army, and Superstition Food Bank. What you don't see there is that last year we had six. CAFSA, the Community Alliance for Family Abuse, did not request this year any funding. Neither did Horizon Health and Wellness Services. But the Salvation Army is a new applicant for us this year. The CDC requested 24,000. I'm going to bounce back one slide. The total of all this money that they requested was 108,540 dollars. We had a budget of 80,000 to give away. So the task for us was making sure we didn't go over budget. We had to debate each of these organizations individually to come up with what to cut, which was not always the easiest process. And the five of us on the board really talked it through quite a bit. We all had different interests and goals and beliefs about what to cut, but we came to this consensus, so I'll quickly go through what their requests were. So as you can see, 24,000 was the CDC administrative, housing projects, hazardous waste, Make a Difference Day Playground, Focal Point, and residential address identifiers, which I found out were the numbers on houses that need to be very clear for a public health and safety reason for fire departments and other personnel to respond to incidents. Boys and Girls Club, 35,000 was their request, mainly for salaries assisting, directly assisting our kids and our youth. Genesis Project for the rent and the utilities of their facility. Salvation Army, 15,355. Variety of things, the outreach specialist, which is actually an individual that's part-time, that's assisting with different programs the Salvation Army is doing locally, benefits, taxes, swamp coolers, other salaries and support services. And then the food bank, simple request, 26,000, all directly to provide food to the community in need. So this is what we recommended based on making those cuts. So as you can see, the only organization that got everything that they asked for was the food bank, and I think that that was based on the ethos that it's going directly to the services that they're giving out to the community. So this isn't going to overhead. It's not going to any costs or things that the organization might have. It's actually going to our people. So that was a big belief in why we made this particular determination. So, yeah, there was some pretty deep cuts made to some of the organizations. We also based some of it on precedent. Looking at AJ CDC requested 24,000 last year, they received six. This year, we're going through the process. We also felt the need to give them six as well, just based on some of the precedents. When Boys and Girls Club last requested 34,000, 35,000, they were given 24,000. So again, based on precedent, we arrived at some of those. And I guess this is the next steps for staff. And any questions about the Health and Human Services Board or what we looked at? Because again, we went through pages and pages of applications, so Tess?
Yeah. Jeff, I actually, Mr. Mayor, I have about four questions for him. Since this is my first go-around on, from this side, to hear about all this. Okay, my first question for you, Jeff, is kind of just an oversimplified question, which is, because I don't know your process of how you make the determination. But $80,000 divided by five organizations was six, that would be $16,000. So why don't you just give everybody $16,000? Is, how do you figure out who should get everything that they ask for and some only a portion of what they ask for?
Yeah. Well, every organization fill out an application. So again, we reviewed this mini-book that was printed for every one of the five of us. So we knew the ins and outs of what the requests were, why they were making them. And then alluding to what Jennifer was talking about, there was a rubric to base our application's strength on how much they met the goals or what they were doing with the funds, right? So we want responsible use of money. We can't have just somebody applying to pocket that money, right? So, you know, that's basically what we were doing, is making sure that it was ethical, was based on the application, what the stated goals of this particular giving was. And just on a high level, some of the organizations didn't even ask for 16,000. So, you know, we weren't going to just take it and divide by five. Although we did try to come up with a bit of a weighted average. That was kind of where we started. But, you know, after talking amongst ourselves, a lot of us felt the same way about giving the money to the food bank or to the Boys and Girls Club.
Okay, my next question for you is, did you guys even consider eliminating any of the applicants, or did you assume just because five applicants or organizations applied, or 10, or 20, would you give all 20?
Well?
A portion of the money? Or how, what, do you look at eliminating anyone?
I mean, I suppose it's a good thing that 20 didn't apply in this case. But, yeah, we, we thought about, I mean, you noticed the CDC requested 24,000, and they received six. Well, what we're recommending is six. And the reason we recommended that is just based on the fact that when you look at the financials of the organization, that's almost their entire budget. They're not doing a lot of fundraising on their own.
There you go.
And I know the city of Apache Junction doesn't want to just give money to people. We want people to work hard and you're rewarded for your work. So I've learned that ethos in being here as long as I have been. So I felt that that organization is based primarily their budget on what we have, what they got last year. So, you know, again, I looked, I know some of the events were canceled because of COVID, so I took that into consideration. But again, that's one of the reasons why we didn't go above and beyond with their recommendations. We did take that into consideration.
Okay. And then I looked over the application form, and it gives, asks a lot of good questions that you guys took in consideration. But did, do you look at an organization like, if I remember right, the Boys and Girls Club was asking for 35,000 for an employee to run a program? And you only gave them 25,000? Well, that's 10,000 less than they asked for, so does that mean now maybe they won't be able to hire that employee, but they're still going to get 24,000 and not do what they asked for the money for? I mean, do you take that in consideration? Because maybe now they can't, can't hire that person. So, I mean, do you even know that upfront from them that if they don't get the full amount, they won't be able to do the program to begin with?
Well, I went through the questions that we asked for clarification before the meeting to allocate the funding, and nobody asked that specific question of the Boys and Girls Club. So I wouldn't know the answer of if they're not able to hire that particular person or people. But we did get clarification about how the Metro Phoenix Clubs operate in conjunction with us, how localized the budgets are. Because Boys and Girls Club is huge, so you might think, why would we give them a penny when they've got millions of dollars nationwide? Apache Junction doesn't have that. So, you know, that was kind of more of a localized discussion. But again, that one, for me, was based on precedent. I don't know what all the other four of the members on Health and Human Services were basing it on, but we hashed it out to come up with 24,500.
Okay.
Jennifer?
I might want to...
Thank you, Your Honor. Tess, I can answer that.
Okay.
So if the Boys and Girls Club is unable to hire that individual for the specific program that they have asked it for, they still have services that they provide and programs that they run, and they are still accountable to proving to us that even though that that program may not have been initiated, they're still providing a service to the residents of Apache Junction. In their quarterly reports, they have to tell us how much they spend, what they spent it on, and then we look at that and determine whether they've met that goal or not. So I will say, in the first quarter of last year's, there was a filing for the dollar amount beyond what their quarterly allotment was. There were certain reasons for that, and we kind of withheld back the money. Because in the past, I've looked at past council meetings, in 2018, the council really stressed the importance of the money coming back into the community. And I think one of the reasons why CDC didn't get all their funding was they spent a lot of money on operational things for their office this year, this last year. And so while it doesn't, while our code does not specify what they can, like, operational costs, because we don't define which accounting system that we use. So in a discussion with the finance director, in order to supply services, what they, what they said they were going to do could require software program. It could require paying the light bill. If the light bill's not paid or the rent's not paid, then say Genesis goes out and there isn't, they're not there to provide the service. So she said, because we haven't defined an accounting program that we follow, she goes, it can be very broad. But as far as the Boys and Girls Club, they still have to tell us what they're spending that money on, and then we kind of make the determination if they've met that requirement.
So as long as it's in the general realm of what they were asking the money for, maybe not, because I think in there they wanted to hire somebody.
True.
And if they couldn't do it with just 24,000, if they use it some other way that still is relevant, then it's okay.
The money stays here in the city, correct? And they understand that this funding is not for a salary for somebody for a lifetime.
Right.
So.
Okay, thank you.
And they touched 430 children last year. So I mean, we wanted to focus on what was going directly to help Apache Junction, and that's why we liked what they were doing.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I kind of have a follow-up question to Tess's. And probably Jennifer, you can answer this. So quarterly reports have to be submitted by all of these programs that we give money to. Now, is the money given to them upfront, or is it given to them quarter? How is the money dispersed?
So the money is not dispersed until they file their first quarter report. Staff will review that and make sure that all of the invoices are attached. When they say they spent $1,200 on books, we have to see who they ordered the books from, how many books they ordered, and that it was delivered. So we go through auditing the quarterly report, and then they are not paid until after. So they spend the money upfront, their own money upfront, and then we reimburse, kind of.
Okay. So, so it's ours, it's city staff, then, who does that?
Yes.
Reviews those reports?
Yes.
So is there, are there times where we don't end up giving up the money that's allotted?
Yes.
Okay.
Horizon Health and Wellness, they had proposed a plan. Their train the trainer, or trainer had left the organization. So there was nobody there to provide the service that they said they were going to provide, so we did not fund them. If by chance they hire somebody and then they are able to do that training, they can actually, once they prove that they've done the training, they can actually apply for the previous quarter that they did not get funded for if they spend more money than their quarterly allotment. So there is the ability for them that once they prove to us that they have provided those services, they can request funding from a previous quarter. But we have withheld funding from them, and they did not receive the full amount until the very end of the fourth quarter. Thank you.
You bet.
Jeff, a quick?
I do, a couple comments. Mr. Struble's outlook, I guess you could say, is not very popular. But to put it in perspective, what we're doing is taking tax dollars from our community and reallocating it. It's, it would be like me going to my neighbor's house and saying, you're going to donate to Salvation Army. Well, you may not want to donate to Salvation Army. You may want to donate to X, Y, and Z. And so I can, that's simplifying what he's, what he's saying. Couple questions, and I have a couple comments. As far as the Boys and Girls Club numbers of helping the 400 some children, are those the same children? Is it the same 100 children, same 50 children, or 400 different children? And is there a way to verify that?
That I did not ask them, but let me see if it was asked by any of the other...
Just curious. I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Oh, no. I'll look at it real quick. What's your next question?
And really, it's something to think about in the future. Also, when we're funding, I actually served on this board, and I've actually volunteered at many of these organizations that apply. I was surprised to see that CAFSA did not. There's a difference between something that's tangible like our food bank and services. So when you provide services, it's a little bit harder to, it's a little bit harder to, I guess you could, ensure that it's getting done. What, you know, we see on paper what people turn in. One of the things I would suggest in the future for the board, and I say this coming from now a different perspective than what I had back when I served on that board, is to call some of these agencies and run through the gamut as a person that needs help. And it'll be a little bit interesting to find out what you learn and, and the help that you get or don't get. Quite frankly, I'm glad to see Horizon's not on here for a couple of different reasons, but so...
That's an interesting point, because, you know, when it comes to services, how do you allocate the time that each person spent on each of the children? And, you know, we are relying on what they told us, which, again, I see here, it says that they attend, the children who attended the Superstition Mountain Club in fiscal year 2021, 2022. And of that, they break it down demographically. So I mean, I could say, you know, 85% of the youth are within Apache Junction. Demographics, 18% African-American, 1% Asian, 23% Caucasian, seven Native American, 13, 38% from multiracial community. It says 58% come from homes with incomes at or below federal poverty rate, which for family four is 26,000. So those are the statistics I'm looking at. I mean, I get the point of calling them. Actually, one of the directors of the local, Angela from the Boys and Girls Club is now Rotarian, so I'm sure I could sit down with her and ask more questions. But, yeah, you know, it's a good thing to think about.
I'm not trying to beat up on anybody. It was just something that was brought to my attention. I used to work there. I know, kind of know the numbers and whatnot. But for an agency that provides services like Horizon or CAFSA that might help assist with services, it would be interesting for some of the panel members or some of the board to call and work through the processes, somebody that needs their help.
Yeah, and Russ St. John was, used to be my brother-in-law before he divorced my sister, and he's my nephew's father. So when it comes to an impact in this town, I hear nothing but good things that he's done. So trust me, when, when I hear about Boys and Girls Club, I want to carry on that legacy as much as I can for them too, especially.
Right?
Yes. Jennifer, you had mentioned two things. One, the quarterly reports, and I understand that staff gets those and goes through the process of issuing checks. Does Health and Human Services as a commission see the quarterly updates in the reporting?
No, they do not.
What is the purpose behind that? Because I know council does not either, but I don't understand necessarily why.
It has never been done that way, but this next year, I would like to include someone from finance to review the reports as well, because that's never been done either. Once the Health and Human Services Commission divides the appropriations, then staff, it's, it's staff's job to determine whether that, that nonprofit has met the goal or not. You had asked why CAFSA had not applied. CAFSA was purchased by New Leaf, and under our contract, it can, the contract cannot be, what's the word I'm looking for, Joel, passed along. It cannot be given to New Leaf. So CAFSA assigned, thank you. So as long as we can still make payment to CAFSA, which we have worked out with them, the check is still going to CAFSA. CAFSA is still providing the services, and so they're going to get their yearly funding. We have never gone back to the Health and Human Services Commission to say this nonprofit didn't meet their goals, basically because it's staff that says, then you didn't meet your goal and you didn't, you're not going to get the full payment.
Your Honor, I would just say that over the many years of this policy, once the contract's done, Kathy Connolly, our former city clerk, would just review the contract. And then if they met the goal, or met the measure or the metric on it, we do a check request and send it through, just as a contract obligation.
No, and I understand that. And I, I mean, as you guys and I think the community knows, I have a lot of experience from the nonprofit side of this, and I too come at a different angle. And I must say, my many, many dinners with former councilmember Struble has probably ingrained some new knowledge and wisdom into my head. But I, I guess my concern is how we're verifying that things are getting done and how we're verifying that this money is being used the way that it should be for its intended purpose and not creating a cyclical approach to then just requiring people, or not requiring, I guess, but making it so that these agencies cannot operate without these funds. I mean, five agencies and two of which have never applied before, I think. And I know we've done a lot to fix that process, but when I see the same numbers every single time, and I then look at the budgets from this year, and I understand that this year's a weird year, but one of the questions I'd have really for the Health and Human Services Commission is what thought was given into how many of these agencies got COVID-19 relief funding? Because some of them got several hundred thousand, if not a couple million dollars. So they're not struggling right now financially in some of those ways. So was that weighted into consideration?
We asked about the local chapters of them. The nationwide, yes, they got money. These organizations got a lot. But nation, locally, Salvation Army didn't receive anything that, that offset that. I know that one specifically was asked about. I don't know about some of these others, but I do, I did get the, gather that some of that was they were not getting the, the funding that you're talking about.
Okay.
Also, some of them did not have the fundraisers that they also were supposed to have. I mean, you remember, Boys and Girls Club tried to ask for liquor license. They got it, but then they couldn't have the event. So a lot of them also, on the flip side, didn't get the funding that they also wanted, which made this year especially important to, to keep that in the budget.
Did any of these agencies get funding from us last year when we put out the $500,000, I think it was? When we did the small business grant, I know we opened it up to nonprofits as well for, I think, like 250,000. Did any of these get that money as well?
The maximum amount they could get was 10,000. I looked through the reports, and I believe one or two did receive that funding, but I don't, off the top of my head, know exactly which ones. But I, again, I was looking through the annual reports and seeing their funding, and I did see a line item for that. But I think the highest amount they got was 3,200. I don't think any of the organizations received the full 10,000 from that particular thing. And again, as we know, we gave, you know, a big portion of it right back to the police department because we didn't give it all away.
Right. And then Jennifer, you had mentioned Horizon Health and Wellness, and so did they, did they finally bill and get the money that they originally applied for, or did they not expense it?
So last year, at the very end, they were able to provide the training that was part of their curriculum that they said that they would do. I would have to go back to see if they received all of their funding or partial funding. I also think I saw city manager Powell over there. No?
He, well, I was, but Jeff got that.
About COVID funding? I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Rest of your question was...
So they, they either spent all of it or half of it at this point?
They, last year, they received most of their money. I would have to double-check to see if they received all of it.
Okay. And it's, I don't know how it worked this year, obviously, with COVID and virtual meetings for portions of this, but did these agencies present to you as Health and Human Services Commission and come forward? I'm pretty upset that none of them are here right now. It actually drives me off the wall when you ask for money and you don't have the balls to show up and represent the very agency you're asking money for.
I'm sure they were invited. The way we handled it when we had our meeting to review the initial applications, we took those packets. We spent about a month looking it over. We had another meeting where it was suggested to have them come in and present. I think I took a page out of Councilman Schroeder's book about unnecessary meetings. Why have an unnecessary meeting? Let's just email them questions, which is what we did. So we have pages of questions that everybody asked. Jennifer compiled it, sent the messages out to clarify some of the things that we weren't sure about in reviewing that packet of information, and that, that helped me make my final determination. So I didn't see any of them face-to-face, no.
Okay. And I know one of the things that was discussed last year was you guys had planned on reaching out to agencies and kind of doing what Vice Mayor was talking about, was some checkups and actually showing up to their events if they have them, or, you know, scheduling time to drop by and do a walk-through and talk a little bit. Is that still being talked about? Because in the past, it's pretty much outside of these quarterly reports, it's been, you know, as agencies, we write the report and get the check, and we don't, we're not questioned on it. We're not inspected, if you will, I mean...
Right. Well, it wasn't in one of our official Health and Human Services meetings, although I think that's a tremendous idea. I know personally, with going through CLI, I saw a need for doing a nonprofit day. So that's something I know I'm going to personally take on, the responsibility of going and seeing what these nonprofits are doing and getting to know their mission and what they need, and hopefully being able to relay that and get better at what we're doing with this. So I think it all feeds back into that system.
Absolutely. And I think the only other concern that I have, I mean, I have a concern, Boys and Girls Club, you position that based off of a salary, and yes, that's not supposed to be perpetual funding, but it is. The food banks kind of in the same boat. You don't have that 26,000. You don't have food. But I see a concern over things like Genesis Project as well, and I've questioned, you know, we're allowing rent or things that are stagnant costs, that if we don't pay for that, where does that go? And again, council can look like the bad guy or Health and Human Services, and it's a needed service. Every single one of these agencies provides great services to the community, and I think they all serve our constituency very well. I, I just, I'm leery on creating perpetual needs for funding over things like that. So I would ask that as you guys progress in this process, that you take that into account as well, and I agree that we definitely need some revamping.
Well, that was one reason why I know I was kind of harsh on AJ CDC, because I, I saw their budget, that they received about 6,000 from us last year. I think the budget was 7,500. I'm like, I raised $1,500 detailing cars for Rotary. Like, somebody can get out and do work to raise money. So when I saw that, I didn't want to create a situation where every year, their, their board will just... So when I saw that, I, I didn't want to create a situation where every year their, their board will just request to the city and receive the funding, that's all they do, you know. I did see something in there about the explanation of not being able to have their fundraiser that they intended because of COVID. I get it. But yeah, I also prioritized giving that was going to hit the hands of our, our citizens, which was, you know, the kids that go through the doors of the Boys and Girls Club that are being served by that program or the food that's going in the mouths of our, our people. So that was why I prioritized that.
Absolutely. And like the councilmember said, it's, it's doable with, what, 800 people at $100. We can raise that, this community is very generous.
Dale?
Yes. Oh, no, I'm good.
Robert?
I guess what, what are we doing here? Are we considering taking this out of the budget or was this last 40 minutes just soapbox talk?
Well, I think that's part of the discussion. I have a few more things to add in to that conversation.
Then we should consider taking this whole thing out of the budget. Is that what we're doing here right now?
For me, I'm, for me, I have, I've come from a perspective of volunteering and donating to a lot of these organizations, not necessarily the ones on the list, some that have repeatedly applied in the past, some that are on here now, to being on the Health and Human Services, to being on the city council to approve funding, to being in the community, working with homeless people and realizing how little help they can actually get through some of the agencies that request funding. And so it's quite an eye-opener. And so actually, Robert, that's a good question. I think that it's time to take a look at this funding to the Health and Human Services. We just had a conversation about our state shared revenue being cut by one, possibly 1.6 million if this new proposal gets voted in by our legislators, which means we're going to have to really tighten up, which means everybody's going to have to really tighten up. And when I go back and think about former councilmember Struble's perspective about taking change out of my neighbor's pocket and, and telling him, deciding for him where he's going to donate it, it really gives a different meaning. And when I, when I work with homeless people and I call these agencies and I start at A and I get run around the gamut and go on a merry-go-round and end up at A and nothing is, you know, three months down the road, they've received nothing, I have to seriously question that. I'm wondering if it's not time to start weaning some of these agencies off of the assistance that we've provided year and year again to prepare for possible impact to our city budget and to prepare them to better fundraise and to, and to, to take care of themselves. Now, just like if, if, if we get cut with this state shared revenue with this new tax, flat tax, it's going to impact our citizens. And so if we take this away, it could potentially impact the citizens that receive help from these agencies. So I'm not really sure, it's a good question. I don't know how to answer that, Robert. These are just some concerns that have come up and I think it's time to hold some agencies' feet to the fire when it comes to the funding that the city provides them.
Your honor?
Yes.
Let me clarify my point right now. I don't want to take this funding away by any means. I don't want to remove it from our budget. I am actually a strong advocate of this funding. That being said, I, I agree that we need more discussion on these in, in moving forward. So I'm okay with this proposal as it is for now. And I would like to, over the next year, be in a better position. I think we'll have a better idea of where we stand with state shared revenue. We'll have a better idea of where we stand in terms of growth. And we can have some honest conversation in terms of that because I also want input from our nonprofit partners in the community, our Health and Human Services. This is a much bigger conversation than just throwing it out tonight and saying, let's get rid of the $80,000.
Yeah.
So I, I'm more or less advocating just, I'm good with this for now. Let's put this on a future agenda item over the next year to really discuss and hone in on.
I agree.
So tonight is a work session?
Yes.
And that's all this night? The policy has just been in place, so we kept it in the budget. And then if we wanted to go that route, we could definitely talk about it more.
Mary, our past president of the Health and Human Services Board is here, so I think she wants to say something as well.
Mayor, Commission, I really appreciate the words that you are having and the discussion that you are having at this point because it's very important for our community to serve the people that are within our community. And we have people within our community that have the means and the ability to manage their lives independently. We have people within our community that are in crisis or are near homeless or are homeless. And there are agencies also within our community that have highly trained personnel that can provide services. What the position that I've had on this commission and when I joined the commission, part of the reason I joined it is that I, I had a vision and I could see that this community also had a vision of how to take care of its residents, the people that live within Apache Junction. The way that we went about funding agencies was pretty much hit and miss. It was very difficult to make the decision of who got what and how it was spent. There really was not a method in place. Are we there now? No, we're not. Are we on the road? Yes, we are. We now have a measurable way of identifying which agencies, you know, should receive the funding. I think that we really need to, to take another look and probably in partnership with you as far as identifying what is our community priorities? Do you want to look more at our youth, the needs of our children? Do you want to look more at the needs of, we have a huge population of elderly. Elderly that at one moment could be on the streets.
Absolutely.
A 70-year-old, 80-year-old, 85-year-old whose partner dies and they end up homeless. Do we have nonprofits that can help them right now? Do we have nonprofits that would be willing to partner? One of the things that I mentioned to the agencies when they were presenting their proposals a year ago was what about shared housing? You know, if that woman loses her husband and has a house, maybe she can't meet the needs for paying the rent. But if she had someone that could live with her and share that, then she could stay in her own home. But we need agencies that will be able to help this individual. Someone that could do a financial check, someone that could do a check on, you know, the compatibility and could maybe train them on how to be good roommates with each other. So throwing the baby out with the bathwater really isn't a solution because you still have the needs of our community for those that aren't totally self-sufficient, that do need people that have the training, have the capabilities. So I think we need that dialogue between the commission and between all of you to find that right path. As far as, you know, do we want to keep the agencies on forever? I was delighted to see the new agencies that have applied for funding. And one of the questions that I would ask the agencies and, and, you know, have them identify, well, if you don't get the funding, how do you manage? And I would let them know, you know, you will not. Our objective is not to continually have you being funded. Our objective is to get you self-sufficient so that you can look for funding elsewhere and get that funding to be self-sustaining. And so, you know, some of the, the new, you know, new agencies that might see a need here or we might identify a need that there's no agency addressing, this funding could go toward providing support so they could start a new program specifically for that populate, that subpopulation within our community so that nobody gets left on the side of the road with no support. So, you know, I, I just wanted a few words to, to let you know. I think there were a couple other things as far as measurable objectives and goals. You know, the, the Boys and Girls Club, they said that the funding was for a staff position. But in actuality, how many programs does that staff member provide or support? Are they able to assure that the children are getting the ability to succeed in school? And how are they measuring that? That's the type of thing that we want to see. I was really impressed with Salvation Army's application because they had excellent objectives and they were measurable. So that's what I try to get the message out to the agencies so that they will come along with us and that they will be able to tell us what they're going to do. Then we, as a commission, can go and visit them and say, hey, show us. And they'll be able to delineate very specifically the objectives that they wrote when they applied for the funding and show us. And we can then report back to you, yes, they're doing it.
Your honor?
Questions?
Can, not, not for you, I'm sorry, Mary. Joel or Bryant, is it possible for the council and the Health and Human Services Commission to have a joint meeting of some form and invite our nonprofit partners to discuss this amongst what the commission sees, what we see and find a starting point?
Yes.
Properly notice it, absolutely, absolutely.
I would be very interested in having a dialogue like that.
Yeah. And I think this is just a start. We're just starting to shift things, see things a little differently and talk about these things. It's always just been people apply, they pretty much get it. And then it sounds to me like the Health and Human Services Chair is possibly interested in seeing the quarterly reports and the board may want to as well. And so maybe, you know, take some of that off of staff a little bit and give the board a little bit more to do. But these aren't, we're not by any means saying, hey, let's just ax this. We're saying it's time to take a look at things and see how we can do it better.
Yeah, it was tough making the cuts because these applications were really well done. You know, and I was just thinking, things that won't happen if the funding doesn't get out there. I mean, CDC does the Make a Difference Day and that's something I always come to the council meetings and see pictures of us cleaning up the area, going out and the community. That, that's why we gave them the $6,000. That's what they were able to spend on Make a Difference Day last year. We want to see that happen again, right? So little things like that are going to start disappearing. And just ethically, I've always felt how we treat the least of these is an indicator of our character. And so seeing that if that's not the first place we look to cut, I, I would say, I would love to see more. But Brayden has a point. You either have to make more money or spend less money. That's, you know, what I tell my clients all day when we do budgets. So I get it. But at the same time, there's more people coming to town, more revenue hopefully will be here. And so let's see how it plays out. But I would say the more is better. And from research that I've done, a dollar spent in the nonprofit space is equivalent to $10 spent on policing. But that's not saying we have to take it away from that budget. I'm saying, you know, when you, when you put money back in caps programs, when you put money back, crime rates drop. You know, communities improve. So it does help in other ways that we don't necessarily see.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We appreciate all the time you guys put in.
We're setting something up in the near future.
Yep. And thank the commission for the work that they've done in getting it this far. Much appreciated.
Okay, we'll skip to the third one, the presentation and discussion cooperative purchase agreement between the city of Apache Junction and Core Civic. Mr. Kelly?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. This has been a event we've been working on for quite a while and I'm actually very pleased to bring it to you and at least present it to you this morning, or this, this evening. Basically, as the handout that was given out in your packets this evening, this is presented to you for your consideration to go into a contract with Core Civic. And it's through a cooperative, a corporate effort between Mesa Police Department and we're basically piggybacking on their contract as have a couple other agencies. But this in no way diminishes any of the relationships and stuff, things we have with Pinnell County. It's basically done for a financial reason. And as we spoke about financial responsibility and everything else, I think you'll understand what we're trying to do with this. So if you look up on your screen, what was happening here is, and this deals with only our misdemeanor offenders, does not affect the felony offenders. The felony offenders will continue to go to Pinnell County as they always have. These are basically the cases that we go on misdemeanors. The court sends them to jail and the time they spend there. So the Core Civic would be used solely for that. And there's a myriad of other benefits that entering in this contract gives the city and the police department. But again, it does not diminish any of the effective relationship we have with Pinnell County. But currently, if you look at the form that's in front of you, on the first day, what happens is Pinnell County Detention Center currently charges us $193.86 to bring a detainee to the jail. That's just to get him booked in. So if you bring him in at 11 o'clock tonight, it's costing us $193. Tomorrow it'll cost $72 every day thereafter. After July 1, which is right around the corner, their IGA is going to bump it up to $285 for the first day. And the additional days will be $98 apiece. The benefit of going over to, Al, help me with this one, it's supposed to hit.
Matt's, Matt's got it.
Core Civic is $70.91 first day, last day, all day. And right now, that number would decrease. I don't think we are trying to get more than 200 into Mesa there a year, all right, a month. But a couple other cities that are much smaller than us have already gone to them for the services. In both cases, to be upfront, we're going to anticipate, just like any other contract, that things will increase. There's a cap on the increase and I have two representatives from Core Civic here tonight. One's the assistant warden, if I didn't get a correct rank. But he's, he's able to answer any operational questions you may have. If you don't have any, that's fine too. And then also another reprimand from the, from the Core Civic operation. But this is one of the things I'm looking at is when we talk about financial responsibility and whatnot to our community, we have to take people in the custody for a variety of reasons. And the ones that we can't just bond out when they arrested and they don't bond out at our station and have to go to, down to Core Civic in this case. We'll pay $70 a night versus paying $180 for the first night and $100 at least on their current rate today until July. That's kind of the gist of it. It doesn't cost us anything to hook up with Core Civic. It's basically a contract. It doesn't cost the city a dime to sign the contract. The only thing to do is have our staff go to Core Civic, which is right down the same neck of the woods as the current jail and drop them off there instead of driving another half a mile down the road and drop them off at the sheriff's office.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could clarify just a little bit. It's not just the people who get taken down there on a one-time deal. Typically, people would plead guilty. There's been situations where there's plea offers extended and then they would have a bunch of terms of probation. One term would be suspended jail. So what that means is, okay, we're going to let you out. We're, you plead guilty, you're not going to jail for 90 days. Instead, you're going to be good for a year, two years, whatever the case is, up to three years on Class 1 misdemeanors. And you're going to have suspended jail. That means you don't have to do it unless you violate your terms of probation. And so a lot of the jail costs are people who promised to do a bunch of things. Get their driver's license, do the classes, pay the restitution, and they don't do it. So the judge goes along with what they agreed to on suspended jail. So that's where a lot of the jail cost is. And Mr. Budget Man, King? We're, what, about $250,000 for jail costs, is that correct?
Your honor, the current amount that we're anticipating spending in this fiscal year is about $174,000. With the changes with Pinnell County that you saw in front of you will take us to $240,000, depending on number, $240,000. So you're looking at just about a $70,000 increase. That doesn't, you know, doesn't consider if we go with this contract, giving the chief some alternatives and the criminal justice system the ability to have some flexibility on misdemeanors. on misdemeanors.
So I just wanted to point out that we, in Apache Junction, if you don't do what you're supposed to do, you're accountable. And not everybody gets jail time. Not everybody gets suspended jail time. But the prosecution is very fair on that. But after two or three times, it's like, okay, it's time for you to go to jail because you are not doing what you were supposed to do. And that's not on every crime, but that's on the significant ones, especially when there are victims involved.
Has anyone got any questions?
Yeah, I have one for the chief. After the first day, how can Core do this job for $30 cheaper than the Pinal County sheriffs?
I can't answer that, but they've been doing it from Mesa Police Department for three years.
I mean, it's just an obvious question to me.
They're not feeding them cat food or anything. That's what I was wondering, I mean.
Mr. Mayor members, John Malloy with Core Civic. It's a good question. The facility in Florence is about 3,500 beds. We are dedicating an 80-bed unit for this population. We have the City of Mesa, the Town of Coolidge, talking to other municipalities as well. So just the economies of scale of such a large facility allows us to provide services at a lower cost. I think Pinal County is facing a situation with their jail where they had a federal population in there that has since left the facility, so they've got those costs to the debt service associated with that facility. So they're trying to recoup those costs through the, through what they're charging various municipalities, so that's why you're seeing this increase, so.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
So, and this may be more for Joel, but, because I'm looking at the contract, and this contract that's in here is basically Mesa's contract, if you're correct. And so Joel, we would set up one that's similar in nature to this one, is that correct?
What you see is a contract that, I don't want to offend our guest, however, I did play with their attorney a little bit on some of the language because I did not, it was not acceptable. They went along with some of the things, but some of the things could not be changed because they were Mesa's stipulations. In fact, I think Mesa's going for an increase, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there's going to be some kind of increased discussions starting next April. Is that correct?
Yes. So the contract started in 2017. We have hit the end of the renewal periods for that contract. So that's going to run through, I believe, the end of May of next year. At that point, the City of Mesa is going to have to rebid the contract. We will respond to that contract. And then you'll see, you know, potentially some new economics for the facility, but we're comfortable that the per diems, which we get paid, which is basically like a capitated health plan per inmate per day, will be in and around what the current per diem is, certainly not approaching where Pinal County is going in their rates.
And that will apply to your other cities, not just Mesa, is that correct?
Yep. So what's happening is other cities are, I believe it's called a cooperative agreement, where rather than having each jurisdiction reinvent the wheel and do a whole new contract, you just basically piggyback on the City of Mesa's contract. They have the largest population by far that we anticipated at the facility. Mesa would run the procurement, and then Apache Junction could piggyback on that, or they could decide that for whatever reason, the per diem doesn't work for them, the provisions of the contract don't work. They certainly could do their own contract, and we'd be amenable to whatever situation makes the most sense for the city.
Well, because the reason I'm asking is because what if something does happen with City of Mesa and they choose to, for whatever reason, get out of the contract? How does that affect us, Joel?
Well, we, the City of AJ would still have the right to contract directly with Core Civic. I don't see that would be, that would not be a problem.
Okay.
We always, and we always have Pinal County.
Right.
There's no contractor, yeah.
There's no contract with Pinal County. I think I did see a draft. They wanted us to sign, however, pursuant to Title 33. They have to take our prisoners no matter what, even without a contract. That's how I look at the law. Probably disagree with some of the deputy county attorneys, but that's how I look at it.
And Mr. Mayor members, we've been in situations certainly in the past where cities have not renewed contracts, so we're not going to send your population back. We'll work with you on a transition if that's what it comes to, but we don't envision that happening. So we're very much government-friendly. We contract with government. We want to make sure that you guys are happy with the services and, you know, we'll work with you in any way that we can.
Do you know, Chief, approximately how many inmates on misdemeanors that we do have, like monthly?
I'd be aligned if I told you exactly. I'd guess maybe 25 to 30.
Okay, so we're nowhere close to 200.
Oh, no, no.
Okay.
I can't guarantee that. A lot of this has affected what we put into jails, like the city attorney says, because of COVID, too. COVID affected a lot of things where we were doing things in law enforcement that it was probably not really the best thing for society as a whole because we were not arresting people for certain things because of the COVID going on. We weren't, judges weren't hearing the cases and people weren't being locked up.
Right.
But in this case, there's, it's an option that we as a city have been forwarded to, and I think it's a gracious one with Core Civic. My staff has gone down and visited their facility numerous times and very happy with the services there. The warden has done numerous phone calls and Zoom meetings with me talking about what if this happens, what if that happens. And that's one of the considerations in this thing is, it's based on finance at this point in time, but it's more than finance because we could not come up with a scenario with Core Civic that if we brought an intoxicated driver in that we had to get down and incarcerated, that they would turn him away. That's not the same story with Pinal County. We would have to have a drunk locked up here until he became sober, and then they might take him down. Or we'd have to spend time with an officer in a hospital waiting for the guy to go through detox and come down. But we went through a scenario, the scenario of talking to the police chief from Mesa and said, have you guys ever had anything on misdemeanors that you brought into your place? And they couldn't come up with one. And we've had a meeting not too long with the Associate Warden here, and there were several chiefs there. We, I mean, we hit on all different angles. What if this? What if that? What if the person's just used methadone or meth? Will you turn them away? No, we take them in. They have a facility on there that's trying to take care of it. We don't have that luxury with Pinal County. They will tell us they won't take them. Take them to the hospital, sit them there. I lose another officer on the street.
Well, that's good to know because personally, I did not know that. So that's good information to have.
And I emphasized back, because I know there was some concern of the relationship between us and Pinal County. Pinal County is very well aware of this. We even told them about it. They were involved in a meeting. They said, if you can do it, do it. And some of the cities have decided to go over to Core. We would like to have that option available. But like was brought up, if they ever came a time where either their rates got higher than we wanted to pay, we can always go back to Pinal County and you can pay whatever Pinal County has. It just was an option we saw, like, why are we paying that amount of money if we can get somebody eat a McDonald's for $70 or take them to Pinal County and think they're at the Ritz Carlton and still paying for the hamburger?
Right, yeah. Chief, what's the average stay? If I can ask, what's the, how long does somebody, when they go down, usually stay? A week, month, a couple days?
On the judge ones, I guess I defer to my colleague here. Some of the other cities are different.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember. I believe that, so if we use City of Mesa as a proxy, I believe it's between 10 and 20 days that we're seeing folks. Is that right?
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Go ahead.
So if we have somebody that's in a psychotic state, would you take him there? Would you take him to the psych hospital and still have to stay with someone? Or do they have that type of facility on site?
I stand, I'm standing in the shadows. You have to repeat, I heard mental crisis and I lost you after that.
If you don't mind, I'd like to answer that. My name is Sean Weed. I'm with the Central Arizona Florence Correctional Complex. And first off, I'd just like to say it's a privilege to be here tonight. I grew up in the small town of Superior and lived down south toward Red Rock, Arizona. Glad to be here. But I will say, we've taken detainees in all states of mental capacity for the City of Mesa and also for Coolidge. And we are equipped with nine providers on site, psychologists on site. We haven't turned one detainee away since 2017 and still been able to accommodate them. There is a rating that they go through, if you have somebody that comes through intoxicated, as to whether we may need to take them off-site. Of course, the big benefit that we hear from Coolidge and from the City of Mesa is that the police officers not having to take them out to a hospital facility and wait for them to get cleared to come because we have those staff on site that treat them and take care of them from that point of view.
Okay, so I guess my question is, because there's a psychiatric hospital in Florence, do you utilize that in extreme cases or is everything on-site?
It's typically on-site through our staff, although I do know that they have done some referrals to seek, to see whether they're going to refer them after they leave there. And I think on two occasions, they have had detainees that had ended up there once their time was done with us. But while they were with us, they did receive treatment from the on-duty staff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And you do the transporting so that that would, our officers aren't tied up with taking them wherever you would actually, if they go out?
Actually, with the agreement that we have with Coolidge, and I believe would be the same with Apache Junction, the officers would transport, but they would be able to drop them off and get back out on the street. And I walked them through that process. It's about 15, 20 minutes to get them off, similar to what they do with the county, but they would be able to get back out. And then, of course, the question would come in next after that about their initial appearance in court. And what we set up with Coolidge was a video teleconferencing process to where their court proceeding is done through VTC with the courts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, first off, Chief, thank you for the work and you guys for the work on this. I know I have a phone call tomorrow with one of our state legislators. So I'll remind them, we are in fact finding ways of cost share, or cost savings to our budgets despite what they might think. The other question I have, and Joel or you guys, on page nine, so it's 45.3, I guess, under price adjustments. Can you walk us through this a little bit? So we, just a couple weeks ago, had a contract that came back for increased costs on the vendor's end. Am I reading this correctly so that if, you know, you guys decide to give your employees $5 more an hour or your costs go up, that our cost won't change while we're in this contract?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Biggs, that's correct. So it's a capitated per diem that we have each year. So to the extent that we're giving salary increases to staff during that iterative period, we absorb that through the per diem. The next year, for instance, Mesa, they rebid the contract, we'll come up with a new per diem. Typically, what happens is if we have a longer-term agreement, you'll have 2.5% inflationary increases, something tied to cost of living adjustments or something like that, once we negotiate that base term.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
I have one more question.
Okay.
Just to clarify again, so the contract is, we would have our own contract, it's just that instead of writing our own and reinventing the wheel, we're going to take Mesa's contract and make it our own, correct? So this isn't, we're not working under the umbrella of Mesa, we would have our own?
Well, we have, you're looking at the first page of our contract, however, Mesa's contract is Exhibit A. So we have to incorporate the Mesa contract.
We're attached to it?
It's actually an exhibit. If you turn to the Exhibit A, you'll see Mesa's contract, and you will see the three amendments that they've made, that they've had since 2017.
But it's still an agreement between us and you?
Oh, yes. It's not with Mesa.
Yeah.
No.
So if Mesa changes their contract, I don't know, maybe next year, I don't know when it's due, do we have to absorb that change as well and amend our contract?
I think there would be discussions with Core Civic on that, yes.
Yeah. So we would be amenable to those types of conversations for sure.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Well, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
This comes back to you on June 1st for consent?
Yes.
Your Honor, I would like to know, what would you like us to do? Would you like us to have it on consent or would you like us to have it as new business?
Consent?
Consent. Consent.
Okay. So Chief, let's get it ready for consent.
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds good to me. Will do. Thank you.
They're not feeding them cat food.
Thank you.
Why not? Feed them cat food, lower the price.
Okay, Presentation and Discussion and Proposed Changes to the Apache Junction City Code, Volume 2, Land Development Code, Chapter 1, Zoning Ordinance. Rudy. Oh, I'm wrong.
Rudy's changed.
Whatever you're doing, Rudy, keep it up.
Yeah, it got pretty.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Kelsey Shatnick. I'm a planner on staff. And tonight I'm going to be going over the proposed changes to the medical marijuana Just to give you a little bit of background on kind of why we are here today, on December 1st, staff was directed to amend the current medical marijuana regulations to include recreational marijuana. On February 23rd, staff held a work session with the Planning and Zoning Commission to review the two draft text changes, and staff was given direction to focus on Version 2, which allowed recreational marijuana in the B1, B2, B3, and B4 zoning districts and treat it in a similar manner as medical marijuana. On March 23rd, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of Version 2 to City Council, and on April 5th, staff held a work session with City Council to review those recommended changes. On April 6th, a public hearing was held, but no action was taken on the draft text amendments because Council wanted more information about what other municipalities were doing in order to regulate recreational marijuana. So in response to that, in my report, I provided a list of 50 cities and municipalities within Arizona and what they are doing to regulate recreational marijuana. Forty-six out of 50 allowed dual licensees. Sixteen out of 50 allowed standalone recreational establishments, and then about 11, I didn't have all the data for this, but about 11 out of 50 were allowing testing facilities. Just to briefly go over what each version meant, Version 1 allowed dual licensee facilities through the CUP process and regulated recreational marijuana establishments the same as medical marijuana dispensaries and prohibited testing facilities. Version 2 allowed recreational marijuana establishments through the CUP process in the B1, B2, and B4 zoning districts, allowed standalone recreational marijuana establishments, provided the same distance requirements as current medical marijuana dispensaries, and also prohibited testing facilities. And then something that was brought up previously about, you know, just keeping the ordinance as is, no text specifically regarding recreational marijuana would be in the zoning ordinance. This could again allow for interpretation of the code where, you know, applicants would agree with staff that no language in the code means it's not allowed within the city. They could seek an appeal or interpretation from the Board of Adjustment, and the Board of Adjustment may agree with staff or determine that they are allowed in any commercial zoning district. And this again may allow dual licensees to go fully recreational without a CUP. That's basically it. I know it's a short presentation. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I have the draft text changes, if you wanted to go over them or I'm here to answer questions.
Real quick, Kelsey, can you go back to the one with all the 50 out of 60?
Yeah.
Thank you, that one. Thank you.
Okay.
Did you have a question?
Not right now.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just needed that.
And I can also, I have the list, so if you want me to pull that up, I can do that as well.
Oh, I have that, but thank you.
Okay.
I had a question in reading through all of this as far as the testing facilities and trying to figure out what exactly that meant other than people were trying everything out. It kept pressing in my mind and I'm going, that cannot be it.
Drive-through sampling.
Yeah, you know, so, you know, I called Development Services today and I said, just explain to me why this is such a big no and why, I said, is it an environmental issue? Why is it no everywhere? And the way I look, so we have it as not prohibited. And the way I was looking at this was, you know, the past four years, we've talked nothing about, nothing except being pro-business and not trying to be the moral code for the entire city. This is a legitimate business. This is a legitimate business. Why would we out and out prohibit it? It just kind of, one of those things that I go, you know, this could be in our industrial area. It could, you know, produce jobs, all of those things that go along with this whole business, whether it's medical or recreational. So I didn't know if anybody else had any thoughts about it, but it just didn't make any sense of why it would be prohibited out and out.
Your Honor.
I was gonna say, you want to respond to that?
So basically, we just, when we kind of started this whole process, we were kind of following the same trend that other municipalities were following, especially in terms of, basically, if you kind of take a look at the list of cities and municipalities that was provided, many of the ones that did not allow standalone facilities did not allow testing facilities. So it kind of just seemed to be the trend of limiting that type of use within the city, would be my guess. In terms of what it is, you know, it's basically, it'd be like a lab, a laboratory that would test the plant and the potency and for any kind of contaminants. I know that the rules for testing facilities only came out, you know, I think it was on the third or the seventh. So they're very new, but they are very detailed in kind of what goes into that. But I think that there might have also been hesitancy with not knowing what that is. What is, you know, because we don't have any, so kind of figuring that out, which is probably why many cities chose to at this time, not allow it.
And it was a big unknown.
Mm-hmm, right, exactly.
But it is highly regulated through the state process, just like all of the rest of this is, correct?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Okay, so it's secure?
Mm-hmm, yeah, they have requirements for security and transportation of it before and after it's been tested. Yeah, it's very detailed.
Okay, thank you.
So we had the cultivation kitchen here, and I've done some work at some cultivation kitchens in Phoenix. And this is pretty much what they do at a cultivation kitchen. So is this just a new way of saying that this is a cultivation kitchen?
So it's a little bit different because I kind of, I think that that would kind of fall under the manufacturer-manufacturing definition, which is kind of included in our current ordinance. You know, I think that the infusion kitchens are more making, you know, the product. And they do, you know, they very well may test it, but I think that the testing facility is
Is separate.
Separate, you know, they, it seems to be different depending on where you are, but it's that they're, you know, focused on actually just testing the product instead of turning it into, you know, like a brownie or a cookie or that kind of thing.
Sure, sure, yeah, yeah, I totally understand that.
They're kind of similar, and, you know, some infusion kitchens may do that as their process, but I think it is.
Well, they all probably would, because they, each individual, whether it's the brownie or the gummy or whatever, they have their own potencies for, on a scale.
Exactly.
So in order to do that, they need to test the product for the potency or contaminants, things like that. So it's almost as if this is just something that broke away from the kitchen to just make another thing that they can use as a business, I'm guessing?
I'm gonna throw in the middle of this one. And if it's a, I'm gonna say a laboratory where you're actually doing the testing of it, especially if you're looking for potential contaminants in the plants, whether they used a herbicide or something in the, to keep the weeds down, that does carry forward unfortunately into the plants. And would this be a separate facilities from the other types of facilities totally?
I believe it would be, yes. Yeah, it'd be its own kind of separate section where the plant would be.
They would grow it there, would they not?
No.
No.
So what, you just have a garbage bag full of weed just dropped off at this place and they put it through the analyzer?
A little unclear about. I was trying to do a little bit more digging about what that looks like. And I think that there might be a mix. They might produce some plant in order to do testing on it and see, you know, maybe with potency and different strains. But I think that it's also that, yeah, the plant would be brought to the testing facility to be tested and then transported.
And I also
They could be doing more for other people that are selling it, or other people, other locations that are selling it.
So they could also though be testing for the potency that it says it is, it actually is.
I believe that a lot of testing
Like a quality control lab.
To be able to put it on their labeling, you know, of the packaging that says that it's gone through certain testing and that it can, you know.
And that's what I kind of was going, that it was almost like a quality control type situation. And why would we say no? That was my question.
I just, it seems so like the kitchen would harvest, grow and harvest a plant to turn it into the consumables or the bud. But before they do that, they would harvest or they would grow this plant, they would harvest this plant, then they would send it out for testing, and then it would be brought back in? And then they would continue the cultivation into the gummy or the brownie or whatever? See, it seems that something's missing here. It seems like there's, it's like this taking a crucial step out of what a kitchen actually does. And it just doesn't make, it just doesn't make any sense to me. Why, I don't know, any business, because everybody's in it to make money, they would not, they would not make a product, have a product ready for cultivation, and then send it out. And then wait for it to come back with the seal of approval. I don't know, whatever it is, the nutrition facts of the weed, I guess. But, and then they turn around and then do what they do with it. I just, it just seems well, to me, it just seems like they're, it's counterproductive if that's what this really is. You know, so I'm guessing that the testing analyzing facility is more of a kitchen than what it's being portrayed to be.
I think I would have to do a little bit more research and get a little bit more clarification. But from what I've looked at, just, you know, doing some research, they, it is more like a laboratory because I'm not sure how much testing that certain, you know, cultivation facilities might have to go through. They might have to meet certain requirements, and they might have to actually send some kind of plants for testing. So I'd have to get clarification on that. But I think it is, it has a different feel to it and a different type of qualification to be an employee, to be able to do the testing and that kind of thing.
Your Honor. What, Kelsey, in the proposals, in the three of them, I am confused if we only, one, if we kept it status quo and didn't change anything? Or in the first proposal, it's just the medical, or it's just the dual facilities? Am I correct?
Correct.
In the first, okay. So with proposal number one, or if we just left it alone as is, if our two businesses either for some reason went under, moved to a different community, do we then not allow them anymore? That's how I'm interpreting this, is we only allow them under medical and then they had to become a dual license facility. I don't believe you can just immediately jump into becoming a dual license facility and the medical is still regulated under the CHAW, correct?
So my understanding is that the CHAW is old language that they no longer rely on. So there are, I believe, a hundred and thirty dispensaries in the state right now, and they are all dual licensees. So they've all already gone through that process. So I would assume under version one, if one of ours would go out of business and leave, this would still allow another dual licensee who'd like to relocate in the city to be able to do so.
Okay, so are they giving out new medical licenses at this point? Or could we only look at one of the hundred and thirty that, I mean, it becomes a wash at that point? That goes back to the Vice Mayor's original point of splitting the pie. It's pie redistribution.
So it's kind of unlikely that you'll see any standalone medical facilities. So, but you do, if you're a dual licensee, I think you kind of have, there's a process you go through. You would probably do your medical first and then go into getting, kind of being a dual licensee. Whether or not there are, you know, they're only allowed still one per ten pharmacies. So I'm not exactly clear on how many medical would just come in, but it would just, you'd pretty much only see dual licensees coming into the city. And they are limited, like I said, right now, there are a hundred and thirty. And then you have, they're dealing with the twenty-six social equity licenses. And then after, and then there are thirteen licenses that, it's kind of location-based. So you can get your license within a certain county, and then you have to stay in that county. You're kind of restricted to that. And then after that point, there, you're allowed, again, one per ten pharmacies. But with the, all of the licenses they have now, the hundred and thirty, the thirteen, and the twenty-six, they're already over what they would normally give out. And so it'd have to come back down to a certain point until they would allow anymore.
Okay.
So most of, you know, besides the twenty-six social equity ones, most of the people who have licenses pretty much have them already.
Okay.
At this point.
And, yeah, and, I mean, I'm still very hesitant. I mean, I've done a lot of thinking on this and talked to a lot of people about it. I'm still really hesitant about the image that it sets, but I'm gonna get overruled on that one, so that's fine. I'm still, I'm not happy with the zoning necessarily being in certain areas. I understand that they're legitimate businesses, but I'll remind the public that so are strip clubs and things like that, and we restrict those as to where we put those. And Gail, I know you're all in favor of bringing those around, but I just
No, I'm not.
I, I think
Never said that.
Oh, sorry, I thought you did. Not tonight, at a different meeting. I I don't know. I'm really torn on this one, very much so. Please clarify.
She never said that at the meeting. She called him a jiggle joint, but she didn't say it.
Well, and actually, it was our esteemed attorney that brought up that we were allowed to have strip joints here, but just in our industrial section, not this section. But I have a question.
Okay.
So we're allowed, the entire state, there's only twenty-six recreational. You called it a social something?
The social equity.
Is the recreational?
Mm-hmm.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay, really confused me. So with all of the medical now, are all of those already consumed in the fact that all of the people that were medical are applied for and received the recreational? So is that like there's no more recreational even available?
So
Someone applied for one?
So the twenty-six are still available, so the, every, so every medical dispensary is now a dual licensee already.
Okay, so they didn't take the twenty-six out of what we already have?
Yeah, those are still, they're still figuring out the rules around those.
Okay, so the whole state, there's only gonna be twenty-six standalone?
At this point, in terms of licenses. And then there are the thirteen that people have applied for, that it's within a certain county.
Some certain areas where there wasn't a medical.
Correct, and they can only stay there. They're limited by
Right.
You know, their geography.
And they can't move around?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Okay.
Mayor, may I ask a question? So are those thirteen a part of those twenty-six, or that's a totally separate number?
Totally separate.
Okay.
So right now, the, I didn't add them together, but the hundred and thirty, the thirteen, and the twenty-six are the licenses that are available and already being used.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any question for Kelsey. I do have something I want to say when we discuss this, when it gets to that point.
Oh, okay.
Because this is questions to her, not the discussion portion. No, or do you want me to discuss it now? Okay, this isn't for you, but just a little while ago, when we were discussing Health and Human Services, Robert made the comment that, "Why are we even discussing this?" Okay? Or at the time, referring to the Health and Human Services, if we weren't going to be, you know, what were we doing with it? Okay, I'm not inclined to be just another city that's following just what everybody else has done. The voters have already legalized recreational marijuana. I think we should just leave this all up entirely to the state of Arizona to regulate it. There's no need for AJ to do anything. We don't need an ordinance. It should be treated the same as any liquor store or drugstore or anything else. And I think we should just table this and let the ordinance die.
I have to agree. I don't see where we need to change anything. We have what we have. We've had this discussion. We landed on leaving it alone last time. Staff came up and made a comment of, you know, "Oh, well, they could come and appeal." Well, anybody can come and appeal. That can happen with this. And so I'm, I feel the same way. Leave it alone. We have what we have. And, you know, as things progress, as things grow, as the needs and wants of the community change, as we grow down south, you know, take a look at it then, we don't, I just don't see any need for this right now.
No, we already have state law. It's already ruled. Why do we need another law?
It's always an option, right, Joel?
Yes.
It's a, your policy, if that's where you want to go, we drop it?
So what would happen if we do nothing?
You just table it and it'll die.
No, I don't mean that.
Not that.
What happens if they And state law applies, and whatever state law dictates in the voter-initiated matter, you'd follow that. And there's all sorts of rules on that, however, and you wouldn't be taking any action on it. So like some of these other cities did, they pass ordinance that prohibited, it wouldn't be prohibited.
So it would be allowed?
Yes.
So someone gets a application, they want to come here, it's just allowed?
It's whatever state law says it is.
Yes, so the state approves AJ for a license.
If you take no action, then, like I said, if, like these other cities voted no for standalone facilities, well, then it would be yes, because you didn't take that action to say no.
But that would just be with medical, though?
Uh-uh.
No.
No. Kelsey, do you know? Or are we just guessing?
So at our, at our last meeting, it was that we had two facilities, and our ordinance allows for those two facilities, and that leaving it alone is where we would be unless one of them left and we brought another one in. We have two. It would not allow any additionals to come in. That's where the conversation was left last meeting.
Yeah.
I think that it's the ideal that you can appeal, because there's, there would just be no language in the code to Address it.
Can we see it on the screen? I know it's, I think, two slides.
So if we made an ordinance to prohibit it, essentially it would mean that people wouldn't have the option to appeal. That would be the only advantage to having the ordinance? Or disadvantage to whichever you look at it?
They would be allowed to appeal. It's, they would be, so if we left it as is, we would agree that no language is in the code, therefore it's not allowed. But that defaults then to the Board of Adjustments, where they can then appeal the Board of Adjustments to bring it in.
And an ordinance prohibiting, could they still, they wouldn't be able to appeal?
Well, they could disagree with the zoning administrator's decision.
So either way, they can appeal. So what are we doing? Let's keep it simple.
It's just if you want to restrict it, basically. If you like the two that you have.
To restrict it.
Okay.
And if you want to keep the two that you have and not allow other ones to come in, then you might choose to, you know, put that in the code so that if someone comes in, they can, it's in the code that it says that they can't come in. But if it's not, then, yeah, the Board of Adjustment will handle the matter. So it's just, you know.
I'm gonna ask one question before I turn it over to you. Any aspect on it now? Currently, we have in our rules that you can't be so close to a school, to a church, things like this.
Mm-hmm.
Would that still apply, or would that be, would go away as well?
So it would still apply for the medical, because that's how it's written.
Medical, I'm talking about recreational.
There wouldn't be any distinction in the code, so I think that that might be something that would be up to the Board of Adjustment.
That might be an interpretation. I agree with her. So you leave it up to the Board of Adjustment. And how many of these would actually come into the city? You have to, I don't know, I, you know, ten, twenty? Probably not.
So what is, I'm sorry, Gail.
Yeah.
So in the version number two, we specifically put in a process that if someone wanted it, this is the only places you can be, correct?
In terms of zoning and the distance and
And it just states And it just states it up ahead. So we've already done all of this work. Why not just state that and eliminate a problem down the road when somebody wants to come here? You know, i- i- it's basically the same, the distance is, and the zoning districts. To me, it would eliminate a problem down the road. And backtracking instead of just being proactive.
To counter that, the, the last point on the, if we left it alone, um, oh, fudge, I lost it, um, was that any new facility would come in potentially and appeal with, with the option of not having a CUP? If they appeal it, can we require a CUP? Cause that leaves those parameters in place to say, if they appeal it, it's up to Board of Adjustments to approve a CUP at that point.
Well, if your code doesn't say a CUP is required, then no.
Got it.
The Board of Adjustment can't just make that up and say, oh, you need a CUP, cause we want you to get a CUP. They can't do that. They have to go by what's written in the code.
Mm-hmm.
They gotta go by what the law says.
What's in the medical marijuana code? And that would be the medical marijuana code that they followed?
If that's all we have, yes. They would go and they'd look at it and they'd start their interpretations.
So we're covered under the medical marijuana then?
Well, there, the law is there, however, the Board of Adjustment might interpret it a different way.
Is that, is that what we're concerned about? Is that the cons-, I'm, is, I'm trying to get a, is that the concern? We're worried about the judgment of our Board of Appeals?
I, I'm, based off of the version two, it goes before planning and zoning and never comes before council anyway. So if we're gonna trust one board, why not trust the other board?
That's, that's my question, is what, what?
And the other boards quasi-judicial. The Board of Adjustments is quasi-judicial, so anything they determine goes before Superior Court at that point.
But either way, it can be appealed, whether we have an ordinance or not. It could still be appealed for so, so what, what are, I, I'm gonna say it again. What are we doing? Why are we complicating it?
Just let it die.
What, I don't understand, we just, we're going in circles here. What's the advantage or disadvantage?
So I would just say, we're, I don't know if we are. We're just following the two directions of staff you gave us.
Absolutely.
I don't know what we, yeah. We just wanna follow your direction.
Just one point of clarification. If, uh, we do nothing and someone appeals it to the Board of Adjustment, a Board of Adjustment's decision can only be appealed to Superior Court. If we have a CUP process, remember, CUP appeals come to you, not to some other board or not to Superior Court. So, so in a CUP, it comes to you for an appeal, and the Board of Adjustment, it goes to another jurisdiction.
So at the most, what you're saying, Rudy, is we could pass an ordinance that says nothing more than, that if it's appealed, uh, that they need a CUP? Without anything else, without all this other stuff? Cause the state law already governs it, so just say that the, to get it, to get a recreational marijuana permit, they have to have, uh, re, apply for a CUP.
Right, which I think is basically what version two does.
Right.
Very similar language as the medical.
And version two is recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yes.
Well, except that version two allows it.
By CUP, they still have to get a CUP.
And only in certain zoning districts.
Right.
So it, it does narrow it down where they can be in the process. If we have no process on the books.
Yeah. Mister Mayor, I have a question for Joel. If we didn't pass, like, version two and say they needed a CUP, and let's say it went to the Board of Adjustment and we didn't like their decision, can we bring this as a council back up to do, make a change? No matter what the Board of Adjustment does?
Uh, well, on that particular case, uh, no.
No.
The process would be that the council would probably meet in executive session to talk about a legal challenge to its own Board of Adjustment. That's one way to do that, and then you would sue your own Board of Adjustment. It's been done in other cities, not on mari-, not on marijuana, but on other things. But then if, say you didn't wanna mess with that particular case, you say, you know, we didn't like the result in this, let's go back and let's talk about a zoning change. And then you would, so the answer is, you would then consider something similar to this? Correct.
But that one would be okay.
No, but we would do this at the time when it's needed.
Well, your, your honor-
But the one that, if the Board of Adjustment had ruled on it and you did not challenge, uh, that decision in court, then that would still be good. And they, they would get, the, the-
That one would be good, but then we could always go and change the zoning.
Correct.
Well, back to the CUP. Now, if a CUP was appealed, it'd come to council?
Yes.
But normally, the CUP doesn't come to council. So if the planning and zoning just said, sure, here's a CUP-
Well, from the first, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Is, is that correct?
From the first instance, a CUP is handled by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
And if they approve it?
And if they approve it, it's good until someone appeals it and they only have thirty days to appeal it. That law, that was changed, uh, I mean, that's how the law is now, and that changed about ten years ago, when it did come to the council. But it doesn't automatically come to the council, it has to be appealed.
So all we're doing is passing the buck. We're either saying, planning and zoning makes the decision, council makes the decision, or Board of Adjustment makes the final decision. It, that's all that's, we're just, it's a shell game here. It's like who, which board makes the final decision? I, i- i- planning and zoning could pass the CUP and it not come before council, correct? You just said that.
Right.
A Board of Appeals, you know, they can, which, anybody can appeal anything. It goes to the Board of Adjustments. And they could make a decision that we either upholds, you know, what we're kind of saying here, or goes against it. But either way, it's, I mean, it, we could get in that scenario three different ways.
Your Honor, am, am I correct in understanding, if we left it as is, though, and it did go to Board of Adjustments, there's no zoning, I mean, they could feasibly put it in almost any zone if they really chose to, that would allow for it, correct?
I believe that is correct, the way it's written.
So that's the only protection that would be the difference between option two and option three. I don't disagree, it doesn't matter who approves it at that point, that's passing the buck. But leaving it, leaving it as is-
Leaves us open.
Leaves us open to literally having it anywhere.
So how is, how, how is it that, um, it, it's my understanding that the facilities we have had, have regulation of where they can be placed? Is, so how would they, how would that be different?
Because they started out as medical marijuana and now they're dual facility.
And they both went through a CUP?
Otherwise, because nature's wonder was there prior to Flatiron Park. Otherwise, it, they would not have been allowed to go there because of their proximity to the park.
Is it your suggestion that we keep it in industrial zoning? Is that what you're saying? If you're worried about it going in residential?
I, I was just, I'm not, I mean, it can't go in residential, they'd have to reform the whole, yeah. But I, I mean, that was my only concern, just realizing that limitation to, um, leaving it as, as is. I don't disagree with, with you, Krista Ortiz, on leaving it as is. I just-
Yeah. Mister Mayor?
Go, go ahead, Gail.
Oh, so-
I don't, I don't think in any way, shape, or form, this council wants to pass the buck to anybody. But in version two, it clearly states what you need, and it clearly states that the, the distance requirements are the same as the current medical marijuana.
Mm-hmm.
So to state this information, I, I don't see what's bad about it. I, I mean, we have a process, we, for medical, we just have to, it basically duplicate and reiterate the same thing for recreational. So it clarifies what the city's position is. It doesn't leave it ambiguous for somebody to say, well, I wanna have this and I wanna have it here, and they got nothing on the books, so let's go for it. So to just be able to clarify what our position is, where, and state a process, that's what we do on any zoning.
Yeah. So Gail, what, what you're saying basically is, we can just say that our recreational marijuana is to follow the ordinance of medical marijuana?
Well, and-
And just let it go at that?
And if you read version number two, that's what it says.
But I think that that's Krista and Tessa's point, is if it already says that-
If it, it already says-
We're already defaulting to the state's medical marijuana requirement, so why are, why do we need to state it?
Because it states it as medical. It doesn't state it as medical and recreational. And to me, it's a way to protect the city and to stop things from going to court.
Your Honor?
Yes.
So, is pretty cut and dry for me. Joel, what's the beeline? Uh, in my opinion, we're a small city, two's enough. What's the beeline to not allow any more in the city limits of Apache Junction? What's the beeline of the process to do? Uh, now, I, we can, because we say no more RV parks, we say no more storage lots, we say no more fifty-five and older trailer parks. These are all things that are normal businesses, but because we feel we have enough of them here, we say there's no more. So I feel this medical, medical, recreational marijuana distributor, while it be a normal business like a gas station or a liquor store, we have enough here. What is the process and how I look at this to say, two's enough? Move on to Gold Canyon, move on to the next one, move on to the next one?
Would we say that to a liquor store?
Would we say that to an, to a storage facility?
Would we say that to a RV park?
But we've already had that discussion, though. We keep hashing and hashing and hashing, how many more do we need? We kinda already had that. I think he's trying to figure out from Joel, what's the quickest point to get to his, what he's suggesting?
Well, because some time has passed, I mean, there's already, the two medical marijuana ones are dual facilities, so you can't stop those. But for additional ones, I suppose you could go and pass an ordinance that does like what these other cities did. But, you know, the state law could change also, and so other, it could be another initiative.
Well, well, before that changes, what, what do we, what would we do?
You would, you would do what these other cities did, where they were asked dual license. Some of them said no, so it's really too late for those. Standalone facilities, a lot of them did say no. And also testing facilities for recreational, so most of them did say no.
I think that your point, though, you're trying to say is, it's, leave it as is. We're not changing anything, we're already allowing it, move on.
No, we're not, uh, we don't wanna allow any more.
Right.
Don't even open the door for any more.
Oh, okay.
So as far as the yays and nays, that's where I stand.
And the, the league did have a model ordinance that did this, so, which came out back in, was it December or November? I can't remember.
Kind of a Nov-
Think it was after the vote.
Mm-hmm.
It's always been December, maybe.
Yeah, and, and a lot of the language that we put in here kind of came from that originally. You know, we used that as a draft.
I mean, we're like, what, four, five square miles? I mean, you can literally get to one of our two dispensaries in ten minutes, no matter where you're at in the city. I mean, that's pretty good.
Unless you're more relaxed and driving a little slower.
So Joel, specifically, what, to answer, um, Robert's question, specifically, what do we need?
Uh, you go back to the model ordinance that the league did, and you follow what, if you wanted to vote no for the standalone and the testing facility. It's, like I said, I think it's too late for the dual, but I think you could, you could pass an ordinance that does what these other cities did.
I think there was a consensus that we didn't have an issue with the dual for the two that we have here.
No, no.
They're great facilities, they've done everything by the books, there's been no issues with PD, we got two that'll be recreational. I don't see, you know, why we would say no on that at this point.
No.
I think the concern is not having one on every street corner, or I don't know. It sounds like the consensus is that's a concern. So that was, you know, just answering Robert's question, what's the quickest way to get there? The league's draft?
That was the quickest way. We'd, we'd go back and look at those, um, model ordinances, and I think that would probably do it.
And then an appeal to any of that would have to, then there would, would, could they still appeal?
Uh, no, if the code says no, the code means, that means no.
Okay. I think you got your-
Mister Mayor? Joel, if, uh, if somebody came into the city and wanted to create a new facility, what's the legal requirements to turn them down, their request?
Well, first you send them to the state to go through the application process, and then at one point, we'd be in touch with the state to talk about what they wanna do.
But if they were approved by the state and they wanna come here to Apache Junction, you know, we can't just arbitrarily tell somebody no, but what can we do to legally tell them no? Or can we not?
You would've had to have the ordinance that said no to the standalone and no to the testing.
All right.
And is it still true that we've had nobody come forward wanting to, I mean, are people knocking down our doors trying to open up a new facility, or are they?
Not till all the new houses get built?
See, then, we, we've had a couple people call and inquire about it. Um, I don't know how many.
I, I mean, has it been in the last month, or was this back in October, November, you know, when, that was voted on?
Um, it's my understanding that the infusion kitchen is, is going to change hands or has already changed hands. We need to talk to them. Their CUP basically expired, because if there's a new ownership group, a new management group, they need to come back through P and Z with a new CUP. I don't know what those folks wanna do, if they wanna continue with the, uh, medical marijuana infusion, if they're thinking that they're just gonna move in and go recreational. So there is one group, uh, that's new to the city right now, that we have not, uh, had a face-to-face meeting with yet. So by the time of your next meeting, we will have more information regarding that particular facility.
But it's already there, so I, I understand it's a new owner, but it's not brand new.
It's expired, or technically, it's, it's null and void, because it's a different group. And that, you're talking about the one on Tomahawk, right? Yes. And that one has, it's not even being used, it's empty right now. Yes, but there's a new group who wants to move in. Yeah, and they still have to finish their sewer hookup and stuff like that, so the old group never complied with all the conditions of their CUP. Yeah, that was a nightmare. Yeah, and this new group- So we've been down that road, and it didn't work out well for us.
Mayor, okay, just, Rudy, just so I'm clear. So because it's new ownership, then, they, that's not going to automatically be a medical and a recreational facility? It's a kid-
Right.
Oh, it's a-
Yeah, we don't know what they wanna be, and we don't know who the new owners are yet. And because there are new owners, under our current medical marijuana laws, those folks would have to apply for a CUP. If they wanna continue being a medical marijuana-producing type facility. If they just wanna produce recreational products, then I think currently, our code does not allow for that. So, so it is, there is, in, in that sense, it is important, uh, cause there, cause there's a group, uh, as far as a pending decision, cause there's a group that is literally knocking at our door.
Would just be in recreational and our ordinance would, as it is, would not allow it?
Right now, it would not allow straight recreation.
And I think that's been the issue here, is that it's, we've got the two facilities that are dual. Does our, where we just keep getting, our ordinance right now, does it, um, does it, do you have to be dual, you have to have the medical prior to the recreational? You do?
Yes.
You, see, that's what I, I keep saying-
We had, we had the two medical facilities, and the new law basically allowed them to become dual licensees automatically.
Right.
Automatically.
So the kitchen under-
The question is, pertains to new facilities who wanna, if a new medical marijuana dispensary wanted to come to the city, they'd still have to go through a CUP process. If a, if a strictly recreational facility wants to come to the city-
They can't.
Right now, we don't have any rules to, to, to deal with them.
Okay, so, but, but I thought you said they couldn't?
Well, uh, yes, but they could appeal.
They could appeal.
They can appeal it. So then it goes to Board of Adjustments?
But if we had an ordinance that said, there's nothing to appeal.
Okay, got it, there you go.
Yeah, we would say, no, you know, right now, our code doesn't allow it, and they say, well, we're gonna appeal that, go to the Board of Adjustment in thirty to forty-five days.
But right now, Rudy, the kitchen that is up for grabs potentially, if, yes, they're new ownership, so they have to go through a CUP, they're medical, so under the current regulation, they're covered. It would go to, it would go to P&amp;Z, and they're covered now. If they wanted to add recreational, they can't do that.
Or they could become medical first, and then, I suppose, they could make products for both medical establishments and recreational.
Can they not appeal the recreational to Board of Adjustments? They're covered on, so again, we're, the, leaving it as is covers us. They, we're not restricting them from opening. They can still open as what they're...
Can't open, no.
Their medical kitchen, I thought.
Yes, but their CUP needs to be renewed, or it needs to be approved for a new group. The CUP doesn't continue with the land. The CUP was with the previous group, which I think they were called Perpetual Healthcare or something like that.
Right, but if that, they can apply for that CUP under current regulation and it goes to planning and zoning.
But this is a kitchen, right? This isn't a dispensary.
Well, they were a cultivation and infusion kitchen facility. They are not a dispensary.
Correct.
The one interested in the property on Tomahawk is not a dispensary. It's a...
Correct.
Now, the obstacle is, are you doing it just for recreational or medical? Not to say that they're going to come and say, oh, yeah, sure, we're doing it for medical, and then turn around and just sell it to the dual licensed.
Yeah, they're not a dispensary, no.
Right, but what I'm saying is their product can then be distributed to the dual-licensed.
Yeah.
And then they can turn around and sell it recreational or...
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, the issue there is the manufacturing, not so much who they're selling their product to.
So they could say they're manufacturing it for anything.
But that's my point. They can still apply for a CUP. They can still go before planning and zoning and get the CUP to operate as a medical facility. What they do inside their building is on them to be truthful business owners.
They would probably reapply for a CUP to be a cultivation and infusion kitchen facility. They can't dispense it from there, but who they sell their products to, could be a medical facility, it could be a recreational facility, it could be a dual licensee.
So they are protected if we were to leave it as is and they go forth and do their thing?
As long as they got a new CUP, yes.
And a CUP goes through planning and zoning.
Yep.
And gets appealed to you.
If it gets appealed.
If someone appeals it.
So, Your Honor, one last thing. I just want to leave one last message for my fellow council members. The, anytime there is any sort of contentious or any kind of situation where we have to talk to staff or some department heads about anything that's going on in the city, it all comes down to the same answer at the end. You guys set the policies. If you don't like the ordinance, you change it. So here you go. This is our opportunity to do something. If we don't want this to potentially grow into something that we don't want to see, we can go in there and change some ordinances.
So, Robert, your perspective is to create an ordinance that just says no?
Yeah. If we didn't have any here, we have a couple of them, and it's not in our, we're a small city. I mean, crying out loud, I mean, we've only got one QT, you know what I'm saying?
My reluctance with that is that when we grow down south, there may be additional, you know...
Sure, these guys can go to Queen Creek, or these guys can go to the, you know...
But the same can be true for what you said, Robert, which is, we could change the ordinance later. We're not stuck to it forever. Should we decide that we need another one, then we can revisit it, can we not?
Yes.
I'm not in favor of your proposal, Robert, strictly on the basis that at that point, we legitimately are restricting business across the board. And just like you said, you know, we only have one QT. Well, one QT is enough right now, but...
Then I'll argue, should we remove the ordinance that says no more RV parks? No more storage facilities? Should we remove that because we're restricting business?
But that's as is. Now, again, we may grow five years from now and we say, well, we can accept a couple more 55 and over parks. I'm, my personal opinion is I'm in favor of the as is. I'm in favor of the as is.
You're in favor of the what?
As is.
Less laws, the better.
Okay. So what's our direction to step?
I don't think we...
Well, this is, this is in directions tonight. This is just a work sessions.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll come back for that.
All right.
Is this in June?
Um, Kelsey, yeah.
I will...
Oh, that's going to be a fun meeting.
Yeah, I will adjourn the meeting tonight.